This conference will now be recorded.
All right, thank you. Jay went through all the members that are here. I also like to add that Alex Florrick is Alex here? Okay, he's not here. And Gail Vassiliar, Secretary, you're here.
I'm here.
Okay, Alex is not here, correct? I guess not. All right, I'd like to remind everyone before we get started, if you want to speak, please raise your hand and the chair will recognize you. Every time you talk, please identify yourself by name and title so we know for the record who's speaking. The public is free to listen but may speak only to the indication of the chair. With that said, I will call this monthly session of the Stratestraining Board of Appeals to all the
No, I'm getting things out here.
Number six. And I would ask Mr. Kiki to read the first petition, which is West Broad.
Yes, first petition is 1692 West Broad Street, petition of Hamwadi Arjune seeking a site plan review in variance of section 3.18 to allow for offense maximum of six foot eight incidental to a family dwelling.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, Lorenzo, I think we're getting some feedback. If you can turn down the volume on your computer.
Okay.
I think that's where we're getting the feedback from. There we go, I think you did it.
All right.
Can you hear me?
You representing the first petition?
No, I believe the applicant is representing themselves.
Okay, so the applicant could just state your name, your address for the record and present your petition.
Is the applicant for 131692 West Broad here? You can unmute yourself, I believe you're muted. I see the applicant here, there you go.
Yes, I am.
Okay, you may go and present.
My name is Hamwadi Arjune, I'm from 169, my address is 1692 West Broad. Positioning for a variance for privacy.
Could you just say a little bit of what you've done and the reason why you're requesting a variance?
I didn't get you quite.
Yeah, just give us a little indication of what you've done and why you're requesting variance.
Not fill the property, it is a sloped property.
You know what, you've installed the fence, is that correct?
Yes.
Anybody, all right, let's see if anybody in the commission has a question as well. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Kiki?
Yes, just like clarification, can you explain the reason why the cinder block base was installed prior to the fence?
Can I answer that? I am her husband, I'm here with her.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
It's because the property is, it's slope, it's like, in the center is high, the front is low, and the back is low. So we kind of fill up the grade, they graded up. So that's the reason why the cinder block was installed, so it don't get erosion from the rain, it washes away into the neighbor's yard. So it's kind of like a floating in the middle of the fence, so the dirt would not wash away.
Anything else, Mr. Kiki?
No, that's it.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Forrester?
Mr. Forrester, for the record, my understanding that this fence was constructed prior to obtaining a building permit? Mr. Hibanski, but based upon the administrative notes, administrative memo, it does appear that it's, there's a memo that the fence was constructed prior to obtaining a building permit. If a building permit had been obtained first, that the cinder block would have, the cinder block structure and the height elevation would have been brought to the attention of the property owner at that time, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Or we would have at least let them know that if they need the cinder block to control erosion or hold back earth, that they would have to modify the height of the fence down to comply with the zoning regulations.
Thank you, no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mary Young for the record. My question is from Mr. Hibanski. You were reviewing your August 18 memorandum. Am I reading correctly that you are not seeing all of the fact relationship between the request for fence height and the sloping conditions?
Yes, that's correct. If you want further explanation, I'll let you ask.
I don't need this, just wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
Judy Clary, did you have a question?
Yes, so the hardship is privacy? Is that what the hardship is here?
Jay, you want to just quickly explain to the commissioners what?
Sure, sure, Jay Hibanski here. The applicant stated on their application, and I'm kind of paraphrasing, that the sloping property is making it challenging for them, I believe, to construct a fence within the zoning regulations. Also, they're seeking more privacy and they feel that the, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of the applicant, I can let them respond as well, but I believe they feel that the taller fence will allow them more privacy. I'm going to unmute the applicant now in case they want to add anything. I just muted them temporarily, so we were getting some feedback, so. Let's see. If the applicant wants to respond, they may.
Does the applicant have anything else to say in regards to this petition? Do any other commissioners have any questions? I guess we can close this petition and move on to the next one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Knott.
I am here in opposition to this petition and I would like to be designated as a presenter and make my comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Knott. You're speaking in opposition, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Hibanski. Well, I recommend that we ask anyone in favor and then move to Mr. Knott.
Okay, anybody in favor of this petition? Again, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Hearing none, I'll move on to Mr. Knott.
Thank you. Can you designate me as a presenter, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Barry Knott, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of David Miller, who lives at 1682 West Broad Street, Stratford. Mr. Miller is the abutting property owner to the east of the applicant's property. In other words, as you face the applicant's house from the street, Mr. Miller's property is on the right, which is the side where the applicant's fence is located. The applicant submitted this application for variance on June 5, 2020. The application for a variance was submitted because the applicant got caught putting up an illegal fence without zoning approval and without the issuance of a building permit. As early as February 11, 2020, I sent a letter to Mr. and Mrs. Arjune by FedEx overnight mail, in which I advised them that I represent their next door neighbor and that we had observed them installing a fence along the proposed property line, the accuracy of which we disputed. Exhibit one, which is on the screen before you right now, is a copy of that letter which I sent to the applicants in February of 2020. I notified them that the erection of this fence constituted the erection of a so-called spike fence, which is prohibited by General Statute Section 52-480. I have highlighted that language in yellow in my submittal. Finally, in the last paragraph of page one of that letter, I pointed out to them that if we are successful in our claim regarding the property line, any structure constructed by them would have to be removed. This letter from me to the applicant was sent to them approximately three months before they submitted their application to you for a variance. Exhibit two is an email chain. There's an email chain between me and John Rusatsky from May 27th and May 28th, 2020, in which I advised John that the Arjunes have constructed an eight to 12-foot-high fence on top of an approximate one-to-two-foot-high concrete wall, which they have also constructed around the perimeter of their property. I pointed out to John that apparently the applicant's intention in building the wall in this manner was to allow the fence to exceed significantly the permitted six-foot height limitation as set forth in section 3.18 of the zoning regulations. In that email, I asked John to provide me with a copy of the cease and desist letter he had sent to the Arjunes regarding the fence. Exhibit three is a copy of the letter which John sent to Mr. and Mrs. Arjune dated June 20, 2020, ordering them to cease and desist all work on the fence due to the fact that they do not have the required permit and the fact that it violated section 3.18 of the zoning regulation, specifically the height limitation of six feet. As indicated earlier, it was three days later that Mrs. Arjune submitted the application for a variance of section 3.18. Exhibit four is an email to me from attorney Tiffany Sierra, who is claims counsel for First Fidelity National Title Insurance. Attorney Sierra was contacting me regarding the property line dispute I had claimed in my letter to Mr. and Mrs. Arjune in February of 2011, which is exhibit one. I'm showing you this exhibit, not because this property line dispute should be any concern of yours, because as you know, property line disputes represent a private dispute between property owners, which is not under jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I show it to you simply so that you can see that Mr. and Mrs. Arjune took my claim to a property line dispute seriously enough to make a claim against their title insurance carrier. Exhibit five is a photo showing an orange silk fence installed by the Arjunes and what they claim to be the property line between their property and the property of my client. It was the installation of this silk fence that prompted my letter to them in February of 2020. Exhibit six is a photo of the extension of that orange silk fence along the purported property line between their property and my client's property. You can see from this photo that the Arjunes had construction material ready in their backyard to begin construction of the offending fence. Exhibit seven is a photo showing primarily the Arjune side of the orange silk fence. You can see from this photo that the Arjunes are beginning to bring in fill material to raise the elevation of their side of the proposed fence. Exhibit eight is a photograph of the construction activity going on in the Arjunes backyard as they prepared to erect the offending fence. Please note that this installation of cinder block base, that the installation of cinder block, excuse me, cinder block base is three cinder blocks high, part of which are sitting upon a concrete foundation, which is a few inches high. So you've got a concrete foundation and three cinder blocks. Exhibit nine is a photo further along the Arjunes' construction project where you can see the cinder block base of the proposed fence significantly higher than the elevation of the Arjunes in my client's backyard. Exhibit 10 is a photograph of the finished cinder block base to the proposed fence, three cinder blocks high. You can see from this photo that the Arjunes had filled in their backyard with substantial amounts of fill to raise the elevation of their property on their side of the fence. You can also tell from this photograph that the elevation of the Arjunes' property is substantially higher than the elevation of my client's property, and that's because they brought in fill to raise the elevation of their property. Exhibit 11 is a photograph of my client standing next to the completed Arjune fence on his side of the fence. This fence, as I indicated to you, was constructed on three cinder block, a three cinder block base. My client is five foot 11 inches tall. And you can see from this photograph that the completed fence is substantially taller than he. It is not six foot four inches to six foot eight inches, as claimed by the applicant in their application. It may be that high on their side of the fence when measured from the higher elevation created by the added fill, but on my client's side of the fence, it is at least eight feet six inches high. And in many places, it's higher than eight feet six inches. Exhibit 12 is a photograph of the completed fence taken from the front sidewalk. You can see it next to the Jeep. You can see from this photograph that the fence is sitting on a cinder block concrete base, which significantly raises the height of the fence above the permitted six foot. By the way, the published height of a Jeep Grand Cherokee is 5.775 feet. You can see from this photo that the height of the fence is substantially higher than the Jeep. Finally, exhibit 13 are the administrative comments of Jay regarding this application. Please note that Jay points out that, quote, "There is a cinder block base to the fence, which is the likely reason why the fence is taller than the six-foot maximum. If the applicant had filed for a building permit before conducting the work, this would have likely been identified as a problem. The board may choose to ignore, inquire rather, with the applicant what alternatives were explored that could possibly have eliminated the need for the sought variance. For example, the applicant could remove the cinder block base and reinstall the fence. The applicant could also modify slash cut the size of the fence panels to comply with section 3.18. The petitioner has cited the hardship as being, quote, 'sloping property slash privacy,' end quote. It does not appear as though any topographic changes on the site makes it unusually difficult to comply with the fence regulations. The hardship appears to be self-created,' end quote. Those are Jay's comments. This application and the construction of this fence, in the manner that I have just described to you, is an outrageous example of one neighbor thumbing his noils at another, ignoring the pleas from his neighbor's attorney to do the right thing, beginning the installation of an illegal fence without zoning approval or the issuance of a building permit, disregarding a cease and desist order issued by the zoning enforcement officer, proceeding with the construction of the fence despite the issuance of a cease and desist order, and then finally submitting an application for a variance to which they are not entitled. I imagine that they think the zoning board of appeals is going to overlook all of those improprieties and grant them release from their own inappropriate conduct to which they are not legally entitled. This application should be not denied, as no hardship exists, as pointed out by Jay in his administrative comments. Additionally, everything that has occurred on the site with respect to this fence was created by the applicant and is therefore self-created. As you know, variances are not legally permitted where there is no hardship and relief sought from a circumstance which is self-created. Thank you very much for your consideration and time."
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close this petition.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to Mr. Knott's comments?
Sure.
The applicant would need to unmute themselves. I can see that they're there, but you have your screen muted, go ahead.
Yeah, can Barry take that presentation to the commission?
Yeah, I'm right here. The reason why we bring the fill into the property, when we bought the property, it was all eroded away. Even our neighbor's backyard has a big pond in it. When it rains, they have like three feet of water sitting in his backyard. So even him need to bring some fill to fill his property. If inspector want to come out and inspect it, they'll see for yourself what's going on. This property was never taken care of for years, a lot of erosion. So it's all eroded away, so of course, yes, there's three cinder blocks to stop the dirt from eroding.
Mr. Elder, I'm going to allow the commissioners, if you want to ask any questions of the petitioner.
Sorry, can you say that again? Hello?
Yeah, Lorenzo, what do you want to repeat?
I wanted to ask Arjune the question, is that permissible?
Sure.
Okay, I would just like to know if the information that Attorney Knott just presented, is that true?
Can you guys hear me? This is Attorney Florrick.
The information is, but the reason why I came down to building department and tried to pull a permit, and they told us in there that once we can build a fence, once we don't exceed eight feet, that was the information we got. But later on, when Jay came, I mean, when John came over, John told us that the guy I spoke to is not the guy who's in charge for fencing, that they gave me the wrong information. If I pull, if you run the record on our property, we pulled a permit to do everything else that we're doing. Why we would not pull a permit to do the fence, didn't do thing like the fence?
Attorney Florrick, you got the floor.
Can you repeat your question, Mr. Elder?
I wanted to know, was all the information that Attorney Knott submitted tonight, was it true?
That's an easy question to answer, because you guys as the Zoning Board of Appeals are the fact finders, so. I mean, you've got Barry Knott, Attorney Knott gave his version of events on behalf of his client, and the petitioners gave their version of events, so the Zoning Board of Appeals has to make a determination as to whose version of facts they credit.
Ms. Young?
Mary Young for the record. I believe Attorney Knott showed something like 15 exhibits in a screen share on that, that was too small for this member to view. And as I think you've heard me say before, advance notice is a good thing. Recently, yesterday, I asked the planning administrator, there was anything new on this continued item, and the answer was no. I would ask if Mr. Hibanski can confirm that the exhibit shown tonight will be provided to him for the record, should there be litigation?
They are right in the record. They're in the record now, Mary.
Thank you. For the record, before Attorney Knott spoke, I was already where he is, hence the question I asked Mr. Hibanski about his staff report. Thank you.
Jay? Jay? Can you hear us?
Yes, yep, I got you.
Go ahead.
I didn't understand the question, I'm not sure I understood the question.
Mary, you want to try again?
Actually, the chairman answered the question. I was hoping that we would get Attorney Knott's information into the record, since it was not provided to the members prior to the meeting, and the chairman confirmed, yes, it is in the record.
Well, that was Barry, that was me, Mary confirming, that's Barry Knott confirming. By submitting it the way I did to this evening, it is now in the recorded record.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say on this petition? Hearing nothing? Can we close this petition and move on to the next one?
Motion to close. Mary Young.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor signify, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's passed, move on to the second petition, Lighthouse Avenue. Mr. Forrester, can you read that one to the record? Mr. Forrester, can you read the second petition to the record, please?
Yes, I can. Petition number two, 175 Lighthouse Avenue, the petition of Dennis Tomczek seeking a site plan review and variance of section 4.2 maximum building coverage to construct additional living space incidental to a single-family dwelling. The hardship is a non-conforming lot.
Okay, if the applicant is here, they can begin their presentation to the board.
So, we've lived in this house for a little over 20 years, and my wife and I decided, this is going to be our forever home. And having raised two children here, as you might imagine, there's been quite a few dings and dents, and we've decided to do a major renovation and make the house what we always wanted it to be. We hired a local architect and we drew up plans. We're making a bump out in the back of the house, making what is now currently our deck into a sunroom. We're adding a covered deck to the side of that with the wall being accordion glass, so we could basically make the wall go away, make the outside sort of dining area part of the inside space, the sunroom having sliding doors. Making a master bath we had always wanted, et cetera, et cetera, and when all that was said and done, we could do everything we had hoped and still be compliant with the maximum lot coverage of 25%. There was one additional thing I had always wanted to do, which is extend the front porch of our house, which goes, I'll say five or six feet, another five feet or so to go to the end of the house. And there are several other houses on our street that have that, and it makes the front porch such that we could put some furniture out there and a table and, you know, would be a nice place we could sit and watch the world go by, kind of thing. And when I asked Jamie to add that to the plan, unfortunately, it went from 25% lot coverage to 25.7. So I chose to roll the dice and petition the board asking that you allow me to extend my front porch to the end of the house and my front porch to the end of the house and have 25.7% of my lot covered because of it. I'd be in compliance with every other, you know, there's no danger of us crossing a setback or anything else. So I'm hopeful that you will allow me to do this. I'm not sure. As you can tell, I'm new to this and I've done my best to fill out all the forms and provide you all the necessary drawings so you could see what we're looking to do. We hired a, had the property resurveyed and et cetera, et cetera. I will say that I've spoken to each and every one of my neighbors. I've lived here for, you know, very active within the community. All my neighbors are 100% for this and actually thankful to see the changes that are going to be made to our house as, you know, it's going to be nice when it's said and done and should improve property values. I know that's not a criteria for asking for a variance, but I think this is, in the grand scheme of things, a relatively small ask. It's something everyone in the neighborhood is in favor of, so I guess I'm hopeful you'll say yes.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, any questions of the petitioner? Ms. Young?
Good evening. May I call you Dennis?
Yes, certainly.
To echo the chairman's sentiments, I thought you made a good presentation and it was good material to read at a time. My question is, did you read the August 21 staff comments prepared by Mr. Hibanski where he encouraged you to find 0.7% elsewhere on the lot so that you can negate the need for variance such as reducing the driveway? And if so, could you tell us more about the process?
I'm having trouble. There's a echo when you speak. I read the comments that Jay provided and he had said something about would it be possible to make the driveway smaller? And I'm not sure I understood his comments.
Sure, this is Jay Hibanski here and I'll just clarify for the board. So my suggestion was, and I'll just read it, the board may choose to inquire of the applicant, what alternatives were explored such as reducing one or all of the proposed additions minimally to bring the proposed lot coverage down the 0.7%. And then I think this is my next sentence that's throwing people off. Should the board choose to approve the sought variance, the applicant could be conditioned to create some additional impervious areas on the site such as the driveway to offset the building. So the thought process behind that is, okay, so we're allowing, if the board decides they want to allow the applicant to go over the allowable coverage and they feel that they want to approve this application, one way for them to help maybe sleep better at night or offset the additional coverage is to provide some additional impervious area on site. And that was just a suggestion, no requirement. I'm not asking that the driveway become smaller. I just thought that it was a suggestion to offset if they choose to, if you all choose to approve this. The other recommendation was to minimally reduce the size of the additions and come under the 7%. So those were the two alternatives I presented.
Right. I have discussed, you know, Jamie also said we could do this, we could tweak that, we could tweak the other thing, when we had spent a very considerable amount of time finally getting everything shoehorned in how we had hoped our house would turn out, you know, the inside of the house. And I guess my thought process was I'd be hesitant to sacrifice some of the benefits we're getting by expanding things that will be essentially interior space to make my front porch a little bit bigger. And rather than that, I, I guess throwing myself on your mercy to ask if you would approve this slight overage so that I essentially, you know, get all the interior changes we're hoping to get. And frankly, I would probably go without expanding the front porch rather than sacrifice some of those other things.
Any further questions?
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, Ms. Young, then Mr. Elder after.
Forgive me if there's still an echo.
There is. Mary, you have an awful echo. I can't understand you. This is Gail DiSillo.
You're good now, Mary.
It sounds better now to me, Mary.
So to make sure I understand, Mr. Hibanski and his hypothetical, how to make me or others sleep better at night, building coverage is what's being requested? Driveway area does not count against building coverage, correct?
Jay Hibanski here, yes, that's correct.
Conceivably, a member such as myself might grant the building coverage variance with the condition that an equivalent area driveway be removed for benefits of reducing stormwater runoff increases. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Elder.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
Okay. I'm just, I'm not that good with numbers. So how much is 07? Is it a measure? Is it like a foot?
You're talking, approximately speaking, I think you're talking of 15 square feet. I'm just looking at my front porch now and it's maybe another five feet to the end of the house and another, you know, maybe three, four feet wide. I'm just spitballing here. And frankly, it's space that's not used for anything anyway. It's not like, instead of having bushes there, I'll have my porch. I'd actually think it'll look better, but also I understand not a argument for a variance. I think I even had a picture of the front of my house. I know it's a relatively small picture, but it would, I'll guesstimate 15 square feet we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Forrester, go ahead.
This is from Mr. Hibanski. In your letter dated August 21, the closing paragraph, and I quote, thus the board does not have the statutory authority to grant the requested variance per Connecticut statute 8.6.
Could you elaborate on that, please?
Well, the applicant stated in their application that their hardship was that they have a non-conforming lot. Just by looking at the zone development table on the site plan that's been presented, the lot contains about an excess of 600 square feet, so it meets the minimum lot requirement, meets the minimum width, it meets the minimum depth. I think, I think what the applicant, you know, I don't know, maybe the applicant, a lot of times people get things, I'm sorry, a lot of times applicants may get confused that the structure might be non-conforming, although it looks to be conforming. So I just was looking, I'm clarifying that I don't think that this is a non-conforming lot.
So that having been said, are you indicating to this board that we don't have the statutory authority to even hear this application? I mean, I'm trying to understand why you would put that in your comments, but yet in a separate letter, you would have suggestions on if the board was to grant the waiver, how to make it conforming. So how can you have it one way and then another way? If it's, if we don't have the statutory authority based upon your letter, why then would you turn around and have suggestions on how we could have the applicant amend their proposal to bring it within the building lot coverage? Are we, I mean, maybe the question's better for Attorney Flor. Attorney Flor, are we eligible based upon the indications from Mr. Hibanski? Does this board have the statutory authority to even hear this petition based upon the language that's in the letter dated August 21?
As I said to Mr. Elder on the last application, again, this is Attorney Flor, you guys are the decision makers. I am here for legal counsel and Jay is the planning and zoning administrator. He's here for more technical stuff on the zoning applications, but ultimately, you do have the authority to hear this. There's been an application made for a variance and you guys ultimately are the ones who determine whether or not the applicant is entitled to a variance. That's how it ends.
So then you're indicating to me that the comments made by Mr. Hibanski at the bottom of his letter should be disregarded by this board because we do have the statutory authority to grant variance under Connecticut statute 8.6?
Jay, you have your hand up. Do you want to?
Go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, I agree with Attorney Flor. The zoning board has the authority to hear this application. That was one of your questions, Commissioner Forrester. Based on the Connecticut general statutes, there's a very narrow window what allows the board to grant a variance. That's the difference. You're allowed to hear it, but if it does not meet the hardship requirement, then you statutorily do not have the authority to grant it. Now, you asked, why would I make a suggestion earlier in my comments? Well, when you've done this long enough, you'll know that boards don't listen to staff all the time and, you know, boards will grant variances where variances should not be granted. So my attempt is to make sure that if the board was looking to ignore my staff comments and they wanted to approve this application, there would be some alternative measures they could take in order to offset the granting of, if you decide to grant it.
Thank you for the clarification. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mary Young. To confirm what you heard Mr. Hibanski say, as I am an author of such memorandums, you never know what a board's going to do, so you try to equip them for various scenarios. Might they approve it? Might they deny it? Might they modify it? My question is to the applicant, if, as we heard, this is not a non-conforming lot, is there a different hardship you might want to offer the board, excuse me, for their consideration should we want to grant this variance? Thank you.
So being new to this and not understanding all of the technical minutia behind the local zoning laws, I don't understand enough to make an intelligent response to that. I looked at, I have a relatively small house on a relative, on a very small lot, so I'm trying to shoehorn this in and based on what I have read, that was the best answer I could come up with to the question. Maybe I could ask you as professionals who do this all the time, if there's anything I may have missed or misunderstood that I should have said on my behalf. I would appreciate any help you could provide in that regard.
I agree.
I frankly don't know enough about the subject matter to probably competently represent myself. I'm just trying to do the best I can as a layperson.
Thank you.
And I don't know, I just, you know, I guess the way I viewed it maybe incorrectly was I was asking for a very small thing to make my home everything I had hoped it would be. And I understood the process was that, you know, the purpose of the zoning board was to look at all these laws and make a decision to say, okay, we'll let this guy go over by point seven. I mean, I think, maybe I'm crazy, but by definition, if you're asking for a variance, you're not in compliance and it's up to the board to say okay or not. But I don't know how everything works.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Question for Mr. Hibanski. The easement for the sidewalk, does that get counted as part of this gentleman's lot area for purposes of measuring coverage?
Yes, it does.
Worth a shot. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions on this petition?
Although Commissioner Young, it could potentially come in, this is Jay Hibanski, I'm sorry, you know, because the applicant cannot use that, cannot develop, cannot put fence, cannot put certain things in that area, could potentially limit their, you know, additional square footage on their lot and that's hypothetically.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Mary, Young, go ahead, Ms. Young, you want to speak?
I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, seeing nobody else has any questions, so I'll make a motion. Oh, anyone here speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone want to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, anyone to speak in favor of this petition outside the petitioner? Anyone want to speak in favor of the petition? Hearing none, I'd move to close this petition. Somebody make a motion?
Mary Young, motion to close.
Motion by Mary Young, the second by Mr. Tiki. Alls in favor, you can raise your hands or say aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. All right, now let's move on to new item, Shoreline Drive. Mr. Tiki, we'll let you do this one again because we can't hear Lorenzo in Mary's speakers. Actually, it's a lot better. Go ahead, Ron.
All right, I'd like to read into the record, application for 46 Shoreline Drive, petition of Bernard McGordy, seeking a site plan review and waiver, seeking to expand a non-conforming structure to construct a deck incidental to single-family dwelling in a RS3 zone.
Mr. McGordy, you're on.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for holding this meeting tonight and taking my application here. I'm also new at this process of going through zoning. I have a small cottage here on Shoreline Drive. The process I'm going through is a homeowners association. I had to get approvals from over 70% of my neighbors to increase the front deck that is now currently 16 feet by eight feet because of the shortness of it. My stairs are within that footprint and it makes it difficult. Last summer, my mother-in-law is walking around the table, people are at the table and there's not room to get by. People have to get up to, so somebody can leave one side of the table to the other. It's just a very narrow. So we're looking to expand the front deck by two feet, by 16, which is 36 square feet. And then the rear deck that I have is kind of like more of a porch. It's 16 by five feet and the stairs are also enclosed in that. We would like to bring that out to, which is allowed by our bylaws, to go out to the 12 feet by 16. So the association, the only issue was the front deck, which had to get the approval of the back deck was within their bylaws. The back was within their bylaws, within the association. I submitted all of the votes and the minutes from the meeting that we did have here in September on my deck and submitted the plans and just looking for grants of the non-conforming lot to increase my decks.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. McGordy of any of the commissioners? Ms. Young.
Good evening, Mr. McGordy.
Good morning, Ms. Young. Good evening.
It's not morning yet.
To read Mr. Habanski's staff comments where he raises questions about your hardship argument.
The hardship is that the deck was small. Well, it's a non-conforming lot. I know that's the hardship, but for me, it's the size of the deck is just, it's not safe for anybody to walk around when we have the table out there, we have six chairs around it. The table itself is four and a half feet by two feet, two and a half feet wide and in that little area, it's just not feasible to walk around. It is the beach community. Most of all the entertaining is done outside. Cottage is very small at seven hundred square feet. So just looking to increase it by the thirty-six square feet to make it feasible to walk around the table without everybody getting up or somebody losing their footing.
Mary Young, for the record, was that a yes to my question? You've read Mr. Habanski's comments?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other commissioners have any questions on this petition? All right, hearing none, then I'll go to, does anyone here want to speak in favor of this petition? Again, anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone opposed to this petition? And is anyone opposed to this petition? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to close this petition. Mr. Elder made a motion, seconded by Ms. Young. All's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously. Okay, now we can close the public portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion for that, to close the public portion?
Motion to close, Mary Young.
Second.
Second, Judy Clary.
All's in favor? Everybody's in favor, huh? Okay, it's closed. Motion to open the administrative session.
Motion to open, Judy Clary.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Elder, all's in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. And the first thing is to vote on the applications of October sixth. What's the commissioner's pleasure? Ms. Young.
Are we reviewing sixteen ninety-two West Broad?
Yep, you want to do that for sure.
Thank you, yes.
Is there a second?
So.
Okay, all's in favor. It's off the table.
Thank you, Mary Young. I would make a motion to deny the application for failure to demonstrate hardship.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Forster. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Ticky?
Aye.
A yes, a yes means you're denying the petition. Mr. Ticky? Mr. Elder? Just raise your hand if it's a yes. Don't raise it if it's a no. Okay, a yes from Mr. Elder. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, petition is denied.
Thank, and thank you very much, folks.
All right, next, somebody want to take off the others, another petition?
Mary Young, motion to take one seventy-five White House app off the table.
Motion by Ms. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Forster, all's in favor? Carried unanimously, it's off the table. What's your pleasure? Ms. Young.
Would make a motion to grant the variance, the unique hardship being the sidewalk easement that deprives the property owner of a portion of use of their property. I would make my motion with the condition that the equivalent amount of square footage that puts them in excess of allowable building coverage be removed from the driveway so that there is no net increase in coverage on site. I hope someone seconds my motion.
Is there a second to Ms. Young's motion?
I'd second.
Okay, second, Judy Clary. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Forster. So as I understand this motion, it's a motion to grant, but yet at the same time we're telling, we're asking the applicant as part of the condition of approval to remove a part of their driveway?
Ms. Young.
You did hear that correctly, that at the end, if the motion is approved by all, the building coverage will increase as requested, but the overall site coverage will not increase pursuant to the recommendation offered by the planning administrator for our consideration.
That's your question, Mr. Forster?
It answers a question with regards to the motion, but I don't know if that's feasible. How do you remove a portion of a driveway? Mr. Habanski.
And I should have been a bit more detailed in my staff comments and I apologize for that. You know, one of the options that the zoning board appeals has done in the past is, you know, if someone has requested a, a, a coverage variance, they have required, they've approved a variance and required the applicant to replace their driveway with an impervious surface such as white stone pebble or make, turn it into a gravel driveway. And so, you know, that would be an option or as Commissioner Young has suggested or as I vaguely suggested in my staff comments, you know, you could all potentially remove a portion of the driveway such as an edge. You take one foot of the length of the driveway and that adds up to the offset amount that, of coverage that is being added in the additions. So those are two options. Gravel driveway, remove one foot.
Mary Young, for the record, if I may modify my own motion, again, I'm making a motion to approve the variance granted hardship being the sidewalk easement depriving the property owner of a portion of use of their property with the condition that an equivalent amount of coverage be a removed or be converted into pervious rather than impervious surfaces. And I hope someone seconds my motion. Thank you.
Is there, is there a second? Lorenzo, if you're raising, if somebody raised your hand? Yes.
No, I didn't raise my hand.
Oh. Is there a second to Ms. Young's motion? Okay, hearing none, the motion dies. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forster?
I make a motion to approve with the hardship being the sidewalk easement.
Motion by Mr. Forster. Second by Mr. Elder. Discussion on Mr. Forster's motion. Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Ticky?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
I agree with Mr. Forster's motion.
Okay, so that's a yes. And the chair votes yes, petition is granted. Okay, we have one more left. Who wants to take Shoreline Drive off the table?
Mr. Forster. Motion to take number forty-six Shoreline Drive off the table.
Motion by Mr. Forster, seconded by Mr. Ticky. All's in favor? Motion carried unanimously. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve, subject to the fact it's a non-conforming lot, but also I see that there's a coastal plan review that has been submitted with this application. We have not yet discussed the coastal plan review. So I, as part of the motion, indicated that a favorable recommendation in the coastal site plan review also be a part of the motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ticky. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Ticky?
Yeah.
Ms. Young?
I'm just thinking about the public safety argument and since Mr. Forster modified my last motion, I wonder if he might modify his motion to throw in public safety as a rationale in support of his motion.
Mr. Forster, you accept that?
I accept that as a, I accept that as a friendly amendment. Thank you, Ms. Young.
Okay.
And I add my voice to granting the motion.
Okay. Mr. Elder, did I get you?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes, motion, a petition is granted. All right, let's move on. Approval of minutes from September first.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Forster, is there a second?
Second, Mary Young.
Mary Young, is, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carried unanimously. Cam's site plan review, Mr. Habanski.
Yep, just one minute, please, while I make a few notes here. So I'm not sure if I understood correctly, when Commissioner Forster, I believe you added the, did you add the coastal site plan review to your prior approval or are you now voting on this separately?
No, I added it to the prior approval, subject to, subject to a favorable recommendation. So we still need to vote on it.
Gotcha. Thank you. So as I mentioned in my staff comments, and I'll just quickly read them into the record, coastal resources present at the approximate location is identified as the town, as identified on the town's coastal resources map as beaches and dunes, which are moderately sloping shores composed of waterwork, sand, gravel, cobbled deposits, beach, and when present, wind-deposited sands, dunes and sand or sand flats. The beach proper is positioned between the mean low water and coastal bluff escarpments or dunes or vegetation. The map designation includes all areas of sandy beach fill. The dunes and sand flats positioned landward and elevated above the beach support coastal grasslands dominated by beach grass. This application was referred to the Department, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection as well as the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission and we have not, we have, which neither has responded to the referrals that were sent on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. I have no, I have no concern. I mean, this is an established condominium complex. We're adding a very small deck. I, I don't think that any coastal resources are endangered with the approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on to members' concerns. Any, anyone? Mr. Forster?
Yeah, is this the appropriate time, Jay, to discuss the airport master plan?
Well, I was going to bring that up.
Okay, then I have no other comments and I'll wait for you to bring up the airport master plan.
All right, well, we were gonna, I mean, you can discuss it here, but I talked over with Jay this morning and we were thinking, if you didn't want to discuss it here, you could send him an email. He would compile everything and then present it that way. But if you want to discuss it here, be my guest.
I've already corresponded with, with Jay, so I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I would just echo his concerns regarding the items in an email that we talked about with regards to flood mitigation, the fact that coastal resilience, coastal roadway protection, drainage, sea level rise, none of which seems to ever been taken into consideration under the master plan. As we know, it is a low-lying area considered by FEMA to be a high flood zone and I don't see the airport commission doing anything to recognize that fact. We do know that major construction took place in South Main Street in order to alleviate the flooding and reduce the amount of time that the neighborhood of Lordship would be cut off from, we'll call it mainland Stratford, from the standpoint of having a difficult time getting emergency services to that location. And I just don't see whereby the airport is taking any consideration into that. God forbid there was some sort of a major incident at a time when there was flooding on the property and then they would need, of course, the city of Bridgeport to respond with their emergency personnel and apparatus. And I don't see anywhere in there where they have taken that into consideration. So I would voice my strong concerns with regards to that.
Mr. Habanski, who's adding the comment you're going forward?
Could you repeat that? Were you talking to me?
Mr. Forster's concerns in our comments when you forward them? Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Young, you have something you wanted to add?
I concur with Mr. Forster and the email Jay Habanski sent on October second, raising a number of these same questions.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on the airport master plan, even though the city of Bridgeport has more votes on it than the town of Stratford? All right, hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Forster, second. Ms. Young, all's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, meaning it's adjourned at eight oh eight. Hey, thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Thank you.
And we'll see you.
Stay safe.
See you next month. Jay, right now for next month. Do you have anything at all yet?
I haven't even, I haven't even looked yet, unfortunately. I'm sorry. It's been, it was, been a busy week so far and I'm not, I didn't look to see if anyone came in with an application by four thirty. I'll let everyone know tomorrow, though.
Thank you very much. Thank everybody for your participation and have a, stay safe.